Please, it's six o'clock and call this meeting to order Monday, May the 12th. And this is the regular session board meeting for May. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to approve the agenda by Mr. Shuford and a second by Mr. Barksdale. Is there any discussion concerning the motion to approve the agenda? With no discussion, we'll have a vote and all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous. We will now have an invocation. At this time, I invite you all to join with us or engage in a moment of silent reflection. And Mr. Abernathy, if you'd lead us in that.
Thank you.
Let us pray.
Lord, grant us faith enough to make real the love of God. Grant us hope in your example, for hope does not disappoint. We pray for our students, especially those that are graduating. Help them to realize that life's opportunities will often come to them in the guise of the challenge or hard work. Help them to be successful. We give thanks to the teachers and staff that made their graduation possible and put the job very well done. Help us to be faithful in prayer and prosper the work of our hands. Amen.
Amen. At this time, Mr. McGinnis, we'll have you to introduce our famous McDowell High School NJROTC color guard.
All right. We're going to go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. You guys want to go ahead and push colors as well?
Please stand.
Colors. Halt. Right. Base. Present. Colors.
Please, please.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Base. Colors. Ready, cut, post. Ready, cut, post. Post. Arms. Forward. March.
And also, ladies and gentlemen, we're privileged tonight to have First Sergeant Miley here to discuss some of the accomplishments and some of the things that are coming up with the ROCTCs. So if you'd like to step forward and take the podium.
Good evening, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, everyone that's here present. I just want to start off by saying thank you very much for all the support over this past year. It did not go in vain by any way, shape, or form. We recently got certified from our area inspector. We are looking at, out of the 51 years of McDowell High School's existence of our unit, 42 of those years, we are a distinguished unit. That is a very serious accolade. Ladies and gentlemen, we are arguably the most decorated and distinguished unit in North Carolina. Thank you. I'd also like to add, we were a little worried as many of our seniors were departing, like many seniors in many programs, with our rifle team moving on, we had to reset our teams. For those who don't know, our rifle team is nationally ranked 17th in the nation across all services. That's approximately around 10,000 programs across the nation. These two cadets you're seeing right here, Cadet Summer Wyatt, Cadet Nan Petchsteiner, they're on our new varsity team. They just placed third in amateur shootout, so good to know we still got some great stuff to look forward to with our rifle team, if we could please. Round of applause. Yeah, we just placed third. Summer Wyatt, she's also ranked 14th in the nation as an individual shooter, and she just took first overall at that recent competition. I'd like to point out something to be proud of in our region, from western North Carolina to eastern Tennessee, we are arguably the toughest competing region in the nation. So, it says accolades of our community and our program. I'd like to digress with this. Please continue to support our great program. We couldn't do it without you. I want to definitely throw a shout out to Ms. Melora Bennett. Her trust and confidence in our program has been amazing. We couldn't do it without her presence, her ability to enable us and our young Americans. And all I simply ask in return is we continue to see your faces out there at these events, at these programs. It means a lot to the next generation of leaders. Thank you.
Tough act to follow. Chairman Frank, Vice Chairman Abernathy, ladies and gentlemen of the board, folks out there with us tonight, we've got quite a few things going on that we're excited about. The first one, he mentioned Ms. Bennett. We'll tell you, Ms. Bennett's not in attendance with us tonight, and I don't want to give away a surprise, but I will tell you where she is. We had some students that are being recognized for the Congressional Art Awards, so they are at Blue Ridge Community College this evening, receiving that award. And I do believe we had a finalist that will be flown up to Washington DC and be recognized there. So, once again, another national recognition. I wish I could tell you the name, but I can't yet because I don't want to get ahead of the Congressional Award, but I did want to just point that out tonight. I'm going to jump right into my superintendent remarks. "May is a time of milestones and celebrations for our students, staff, and families. Tonight, we are celebrating the success of many of our talented students who've earned state and national recognitions this spring. We are also proud to announce that our Lady Titan softball team will compete in the third round of the state playoffs tomorrow evening at Weddington High School. I have to say, if I were Weddington, I would be a little concerned. They've been really, really tough this year, especially after getting the girls back from the basketball. Over the weekend, it was Mother's Day, and what better gift for a mother than a child's graduation?" It's funny how those two things tend to go together. You have the universities and community colleges that often graduate that same weekend. This weekend, many of our students earned their associate's degrees. Fifty-four degrees were awarded at MAI and MEC, while 10 were awarded at McDowell High School. A total of 64 associate's degrees were awarded to McDowell County School students. I always think this is amazing that they earn these before they're presented with their high school diplomas. Just think about that. Let that settle in for just a minute. It's such a big deal. Graduation for MAI and MEC will be held May 16th, and then graduation for the Summit Academy will be June 3rd. Graduation for McDowell High School will be June 6th, so we've got those up and coming. The county office has been very busy working on plans for '25 and '26 school year, really since January. We really start preparing for the next school year, preparing for convocation, building of schedules, and reading and working through budgets. We have heavily emphasized our collaboration between our district and McDowell Tech. We're fortunate to have such great partners who want to help our students earn and achieve at the college level. Just mentioned those associate's degrees. We're even striving to be a pilot with the state that would allow our traditional high school students as early as ninth grade to receive some college credit. We hope to see the number of graduates with associate's degree certificates grow. And I see some eighth graders here in the front row, so if we get that pilot, and you're at the traditional high school, you could be one of the first ones that can attend community college classes in the ninth grade at McDowell High School. We're really pushing for that. I'd love to see us be able to do that. We're also incredibly grateful for our partnership with our county commissioners, who've been very open and supportive in our budget meetings. Tonight, at the commissioners' meeting just about an hour ago, our commissioners agreed to support us regarding land contracts that will allow us to take the next step in becoming shovel-ready to apply for a state-level grant to build a new school. Board, thank you for the work, which has brought us to this point. In the grand scheme of things, it's like the first quarter. There's a lot of work to be done, and the process can take four, five, or even six years. Regardless of the time, I know we will put in the hard work needed to ensure we can build something that will stand for generations. This is essential work, and I am honored to work alongside of each of you throughout this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grit. And that is exciting news. Look forward to getting further along in that process. Item number six on the agenda is board proclamation, and I would like to read this, proclamation recognizing May the 27th, 2025, as McDowell Hero Day. Whereas the strength and spirit of McDowell County are rooted in the courage, service, and sacrifice of the many heroes who protect, serve, and uplift our community each and every day. And whereas, these heroes include law enforcement officers, emergency services, and firefighters who devote themselves to the well-being of others. And whereas, the people of McDowell County benefit daily from the dedication, bravery, and selflessness of these individuals who often go unrecognized but never unnoticed. And whereas, it is fitting and proper that we pause to honor, thank, and celebrate those who give so much of themselves for the greater good of our community. And whereas, McDowell Hero Day will serve as a reminder of the impact our local heroes have on our lives, and as an opportunity to express our deepest gratitude for their service. Now therefore, I, Terry Frank, Chairman of the Board of McDowell County Schools, do hereby proclaim May 27th, 2025, as McDowell Hero Day in the McDowell County school system, and encourage all students and teachers to join in recognizing and celebrating the many heroes, past and present, who make McDowell County a safer, stronger, and more compassionate place to live. So proclaim this the 12th day of May, 2025. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to make that proclamation set in our record.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mr. Baker and a second by Mr. Suddles for the board proclamation day, May 27th, 2025. Is there any further discussion? At this time, I'll call for a vote, and all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous. And Dr. Grit, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, before I step up to pass out some awards, I want to just let the folks know what that proclamation was all about. We had some students who took that upon themselves as part of the Chick-fil-A Leadership Program, and I know Ms. Finley's going to come up and share that information with us, but these students took this proclamation to our county commissioners, as well as our city council, and had them recognize this day, and we're very proud of the work that you guys have done. We didn't necessarily want you to come present to us, we wanted to have you come and receive an award for what you've done for the community. So this is our time to really say thank you to the students who did that. And Ms. Finley, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. It's always a pleasure to come and recognize the outstanding accomplishments of our students and their school system. I want to give you a little bit about our Chick-fil-A Academy, and then lead into how McDowell Hero came about. We had a new initiative this year, and it's called the Chick-fil-A Leader Academy, which is a national high school leadership program focused on impact through action. After learning about this last spring, I asked Ms. Kendall Wall to explore how it would benefit our students. Thanks to her hard work, McDowell County CTE successfully launched the academy this year, providing students with meaningful opportunities to grow as leaders while serving their community. But first, I want to extend a special thank you to Dallas Soundenmeyer, the owner of the Morganton Chick-fil-A, for his incredible support. His commitment to servant leadership has been a driving force behind their program's success. From mentoring students to supporting their projects, Mr. Soundenmeyer has made a lasting impact on our students and school and the greater community. While he could not be here tonight because of other commitments, we wanted to publicly recognize him and thank him for his partnership and leadership, and for the food that he brought to us every meeting. But as part of the Chick-fil-A Academy, students were tasked with creating and executing a community project. After reflecting on the effects of Hurricane Helene and the January 21st lockdown at McDowell High School, they felt a strong desire to honor and celebrate our local first responders. These events reminded us of the daily sacrifices made by the men and women who serve and protect our community. Their project became known as McDowell County Hero Day, and to gain support, the following students presented their proposal to both McDowell County Commissioners and the Marion City Council. Garrison Dietrich, Caitlin Finley, Stella Webb, Reed Wall, and Jeremy Berry. Following their presentation, the McDowell County Commissioners voted to officially recognize May the 27th, 2025, as McDowell County Hero Day, and the city council issued a proclamation in its honor. We are incredibly proud of these students for stepping out of their comfort zones and becoming advocates for our community. I'm also going to email you a video that shows all the activities that the Chick-fil-A Academy has done throughout the school year. I'll send that later tonight. And again, thank you for your proclamation as well. Next, we are proud to recognize two outstanding students from McDowell Early College who competed at the Skills USA North Carolina State Leadership Conference, held April the 9th through the 11th at the Greensboro Coliseum. This conference is the largest showcase of career and technical education in North Carolina with over 3,000 students competing in more than 140 leadership development events. Cooper Phillips and Malika Wilson represented McDowell County in the EMT competition, where they completed a written exam, demonstrated their skills across four stations, and responded to trauma and medical scenarios. We are proud to share that Cooper and Malika placed first in the state and will advance to represent North Carolina at the Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference, June the 23rd through the 27th in Atlanta, Georgia. And Mr. Barry McPeters is their teacher. Congratulations, students. Next, I want to recognize two outstanding DECA students. Again, if you recall, they were here last month. Bailey Moss and Ray Fiddix. In March, they were honored as top qualifiers for the Virtual Business Challenge Restaurant Event. In April, they traveled to the International DECA Conference in Orlando, Florida, where they earned second place internationally. We are incredibly proud of their hard work and dedication, as well as the support of their advisors, Ms. Heather Martin and Mr. Todd Queen. And they have assured me that first place is coming next year. International, international, international competition. Yes, second place. Now, we will turn our attention to the FBLA state winners from Foothills Community School. Sidney Stafford, Mary Ruth Blake, and Kalen McCarthy placed fourth in the Community Service Project category for their work supporting the Alzheimer's Unit at Rose Hill Retirement Home. Their project included caroling during the holidays and spending time after school crafting with the residents. The team gave a seven-minute presentation at the state conference showcasing their chapter's impact, and they took fourth place. Next, Nathan Tipper took first place in Mission and Pledge Event, reciting the FBLA mission and pledge from memory and sharing a personal reflection on its meaning. All four of these FBLA students have qualified to compete at the FBLA National Leadership Conference in Anaheim, California, June the 28th through July the 3rd, and their advisors are Ms. Tasha Ramsey and Ms. Katie McFarland. Next, we will recognize West McDowell Middle School FBLA students. After experiencing the effects of Hurricane Helene, Carson Buchanan, Landon Latner, and Lucas Wasman were inspired to help their community recover. Their community service project earned second place in the state and included supporting distribution centers, feeding relief workers, helping displaced families, running raffles to raise money, providing Christmas gifts for flood-affected families, and delivering lunch to the Army Corps of Engineers assisting with a cleanup. Logan Reese also placed fourth in the Financial Literacy Competition, and he had to demonstrate knowledge around competencies of various financial skills and take an objective test. And again, these students have qualified for the National Leadership Conference. Yes, I'm sorry. These students, along with FCS's FBLA students, have qualified for the National Leadership Conference in Anaheim, California, which will be June the 23rd through July the 3rd. And then, the advisors for West McDowell FBLA are Ms. Mindy Hutchins and Ms. Sarah Wills. Next, we are proud to recognize Ms. Gracie Davis, who has been selected as a 2025-26 Regional FFA Officer. To earn this honor, Gracie had to complete a multi-step application process, including an interview at McDowell High School, a written application and essay, and a final interview alongside 16 other applicants. She was one of eight selected and will serve as the parliamentarian. In her role, she will ensure that the proper use of Robert's Rules of Order during meetings are helped and will help lead to leadership conferences for the entire western region. Ms. Sophie Vorus is her FFA advisor, and this marks the fifth time that McDowell County has had a regional FFA officer. And it's a proud tradition that we hope will continue, so congratulations. And finally, Carson Buchanan from West McDowell Middle School and Riley Barrier from Foothills Community School were the two winners from our McDowell Amazing Shake Competition in February, and they went on to compete at the Global Amazing Shake Competition in Atlanta. The Amazing Shake is a live competition that teaches students vital professional skills like communication and leadership, helping them to prepare to become the next generation of leaders. Carson and Riley placed in the top 50 out of 400 competitors based on their performance in the Gauntlet and the Work the Room Rounds. As first-time competitors, this is an outstanding accomplishment, and we're very proud of you. That is a national, a global competition, yes. And Ms. Mindy Hutchins is in charge of our Amazing Shake, along with Ms. Tasha Ramsey and Katie McFarland from FCS. So thank you for celebrating all of our CT achievements tonight. I appreciate you always putting our students first.
We are very excited. We were able to honor two nominees for the Governor's School at the last board meeting, and recently, we received an email and have a third. We have a student that will be attending from McDowell Early College, McDowell High School, and McDowell Academy of Innovation. And so that third exemplifies excellence in teaching and has consistently made a profound impact on student learning. Mrs. Bird has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to student success throughout her career. Her ability to break down mathematical concepts into accessible lessons has helped countless students build confidence and proficiency in mathematics. She creates an engaging classroom environment where students feel encouraged to ask questions, challenge themselves, and develop a deep understanding of mathematical principles. Beyond her instructional expertise, Ms. Bird fosters a positive and supportive learning atmosphere. She takes the time to connect with students on a personal level, understanding their unique needs and learning styles. Her patience, encouragement, and belief in every student having potential have inspired many to overcome academic challenges and to achieve their goals. Colleagues and students alike admire Ms. Bird for her professionalism, passion, and dedication to education. She actively contributes to the school community by mentoring fellow teachers, collaborating on curriculum development, and participating in initiatives that enhance student learning expertise. Her leadership and commitment to excellence serve as a role model for all educators. On a personal note, I absolutely adore Ms. Bird for one, but for two, Ms. Bird was the Fellowship of Christian Athlete sponsor when I was in high school, and I was honored to be able to spend time with her doing outside projects, and she's... students build confidence and proficiency in mathematics. She creates an engaging classroom environment where students feel encouraged to ask questions, challenge themselves, and develop a deep understanding of mathematical principles. Beyond her instructional expertise, Ms. Bird fosters a positive and supportive learning atmosphere. She takes the time to connect with students on a personal level, understanding their unique needs and learning styles. Her patient encouragement and belief in every student having potential have inspired many to overcome academic challenges and to achieve their goals. Colleagues and students alike admire Ms. Bird for her professionalism, passion, and dedication to education. She actively contributes to the school community by mentoring fellow teachers, collaborating on curriculum development, and participating in initiatives that enhance student learning expertise. Her leadership and commitment to excellence serve as a role model for all educators. On a personal note, I absolutely adore Ms. Bird for one, but for two, Ms. Bird was the Fellowship of Christian Athlete sponsor when I was in high school, and I was honored to be able to spend time with her doing outside projects. And she just is one of the very best, even after retirement, to come back and continue working because she cares about students and she cares that they grow and to continue to encourage them. So, I think this is a very, very well-deserved honor, Ms. Bird. Next up for our Classified Employee of the Month, please welcome Ms. Stacy Buchanan as May's Employee of the Month. Ms. Buchanan routinely goes above and beyond, taking on responsibilities outside of her job scope, stepping up whenever needed, and doing it all with professionalism and team-first attitude. Her hard work and willingness to support others has made a real difference in the IT department by improving morale and overall efficiency and helping those that desperately need it when we say, "Stacy, help, please." Ms. Buchanan demonstrated exceptional dedication and versatility across multiple support areas. She successfully closed 40 support tickets in April, which represents only a portion of her workload, as many of her contributions extend beyond what is recorded within Sherpa Desk. In addition to maintaining her weekly school rotation responsibilities, Ms. Buchanan assisted with several other roles that are typically assigned to other personnel. This included providing expert oversight and management of the county's website, invaluable assistance with the LMS software, critical support of staff with ClassLink, asset management, and other essential technology systems. Her ability to seamlessly manage and support these varied systems reflects on both her technical expertise and commitment to ensuring smooth operations across the district. She is a true professional and a valued team member. I'd also like to add to this, to speak to her character, is that Ms. Buchanan is also a foster parent within McDowell County Schools and has fostered multiple children, providing love and support for them, and I can think of no better way to serve others. So, thank you, Ms. Buchanan, a very well-deserved honor.
Okay, item number nine on the agenda is a report from the teacher representative, Mr. Joy Hill. Mr. Hill, I have a question for you.
By all means.
We seem to have missed the memo up here on the board, but we noticed everybody's in green over here, and you're in green, and some of the folks in the back are in green. Did we miss something?
Oh, you didn't miss it. We just didn't tell you.
Okay, good enough.
Did Ms. Bird leave? Okay, I just have to say, I'm a little relieved because when I realized I was in the same room with Cheryl Bird again, I got all fluttery and a little teary-eyed. I was in Ms. Bird's class her very first year teaching. This is not the first time I've mentioned her at a board meeting, but I just, this is the presence of greatness, and I love that woman. Okay, all right, I'm sorry. Dignified. Okay. So, tonight, we're going to hear from Old Fort Elementary and Pleasant Gardens Elementary. I'm quite sure you're aware of why we might have coupled these two schools, because they've been coupled all year long. Also, as I've told you before, my mother went to... Is it okay? Are we happy? Okay, well, I'll just keep rambling then. I am quite adept at that. My mother went to Old Fort, and my father, yes, that's right, my father went to PG. So, this is what the coupling looks like. So...
So, our internet's down, Mr. Hill, so you'll have to just go off your PowerPoint if you can.
Off my rambling? All right. All right. Well, I see a beautiful pic. Okay, so, let's see. All right, so, this is from Old Fort, in the words of the administration at Old Fort. "After a season of resilience and growth, we look forward to welcoming students back to the halls of Old Fort Elementary, where our roots run deep and our future is bright. Old Fort pride deep inside soar." Old Fort Elementary, and they've given us a motto here, which is "Stronger than the The theme for the Old Fort Elementary for the 2024...
...up for any time we need, you know, either a new school or a large renovation project. The projected projects, we put $2 million in there as budget every year, although not every year do we hit $2 million. That can be for, you know, in the past, we've had a really large roofing project, we've had the tennis courts, we've had the high school athletic facilities as far as the field, things like that, there were larger projects. In general, we don't hit quite the $2 million, but that gives us a good number so that we know that we're covered for anything that could happen to our buildings that might not be covered either with insurance. Thankfully, we have insurance in FEMA for this last disaster. But it gives us a number that we can put in there to make sure we have at least $2 million a year if anything comes up and we have renovations. So, with all of that being said, you can see that we're ending the year this year a little over $10 million in that projected balance, and you can see the balance through 2039. If nothing else changed, other than paying debt payments off and the reserve and the projected projects of $2 million a year, we would be able to look like $12.5 million by 2039. Does anybody have any questions on that or clarification?
I think it's important that we remember capital funds can only be used to do buildings. We had a great conversation in Building and Grounds Committee today about that, and just it's a great reminder to let folks know that we can't use these for salaries. This is a completely separate pot of money, so when we talk about new projects or new schools, like we'll be talking about here in just a few minutes, this is the pot of money that's set aside for that, and it's both local and state dollars that are in there. And this money is technically housed at the county, and it would require us to let the county know what we were doing and seek some approval there, too. So, this is just another example of why we work so closely with our county commissioners. I think it's a really critical piece to add to this as well.
Okay. Anything else?
Do y'all have any questions for Ms. Rampy?
Thank you.
Thank you. That segues into new business. Am I okay to continue? Before we do, I think, did we want to look at the pictures? Okay. Mr. Barry Hill, if we can, we'll put the slides back up for PG and Old Fort because we're jealous that Mr. Hill was the only one who got to see the pictures. We want to make sure everybody else gets to see them. If you can just kind of walk us through the photos here, Mr. Hill.
You probably need to go back up there.
So, here again is the theme for the year. Look in the mirror. That's your competition. You and the motto has been "Stronger than the storm." Right, and there's Old Fort's. This is the family night and the first day of school. The term was set to be a year full of academic and extracurricular challenges, funding, community involvement. Given a month, the school proved its strength and spirit. Again, family and, again, adorable pictures. All right. In the middle there, there you see it. I believe that's the storm I was attempting to imitate. Is that correct? All right, yes. Would you like to tell us about video?
It's just the playground, because the video that's everything to do with us about the program and about schools around us.
So, it wasn't a storm. So, I pretended to be a storm for no good reason. All right.
Was it during the storm?
Yeah, it was the water. It was the water. We need to share that with you guys. I'll send that out so you guys can see that.
It's a good reminder of how bad things were and how much you've overcome, we as a community have. All right. So, despite the challenges of being displaced by the storm, Old Fort has continued to thrive. Can you tell us about the t-shirt? Is that, did you have that made or...
We have the PD employees, but she actually came up with this. And she's been part of this group together. She's very popular.
Oh, that's awesome. Okay, great, great. There are the autumn care pictures at Christmas time. And this is the kindergarten teachers welcoming the new tribe members, the incoming, you do mean by that, the incoming elementary's, I mean, the kindergarten students. Again, you see my concerns. I just don't think they've ever met many 100-year-olds. Yeah, the young man in the red seemed, at least he managed a little gray hair. There's Jason Boyer, the meteorologist, visited school, and there are those wonderful pictures that I described to you with the trip to Charleston. What is the blue plane? Do you know exactly what that is? So, did this involve maybe going to New York Town, or is that still there?
The Blue Angels.
Oh, the Blue Angels. All right, and the lessons for Earth Day, and the carp students from all three middle schools who came to visit. There we go. And I think another big round of applause is in order for Old Fort and PG. And I want one of those t-shirts. All right.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate that.
All right. We'll go ahead and get into our new business tonight. I mentioned to you earlier about being at the commissioners' meeting earlier tonight. We did gain approval on our two contracts, and I want to talk to you a little bit about what that looks like, and I just want to step you guys down through, very similar to what I stepped the commissioners down through. I'm going to update on the commissioners, as well as give you guys the criteria for capital grants. And finally, I'd like to offer a recommendation for you guys to consider. So, I'll say that to say next month, we've got quite a bit of things to really be considering, and we'll ask for a vote on some things specifically around what we'd like to do school-wise. But I want to start out with just reminding folks where we've came from. So, two years ago, McDowell County Schools did a series of studies, and one of those was prior to me coming here, so it would actually be two-plus years. And that was a study by Dr. Jim Watson to identify the needs in our district facility-wise. The second study, you guys will remember, was a study that was done by North Carolina State University, and that was based on student population and density and growth. Both of the studies recommended the idea of consolidating in schools. I will point out that in Dr. Watson's study, he specifically noted the need for potential consolidation on the east side and referenced Marion Elementary and the Eastfield Elementary. In the North Carolina State study, they too recommended, you know, the possibilities of that, and they took it a step further to say, you really need to focus on land or some type of building project that would be within one mile and a half radius of East Middle School. So, and of course, that leads us up to where we are right now. As you know, the state will award $42, $52, or $62 million in capital grants to build a new school. The stipulations for the grants and the rubrics are listed. Here is a tier-one county, and we are a tier-one county. Combining two schools brings you higher up on that rubric and being shovel-ready, which we've got to really try to get done between now and December. So, I would also add the extra piece that Western North Carolina is under the spotlight based on the hurricane and the events that we've dealt with this fall. It's a great opportunity for us to ask for additional funding. The bottom line is, I believe, we're positioned well here. Tonight, when I went to the board, I presented the two parcels that you guys had already voted on the contracts. And keep in mind, I referenced the general statute that states that the Board of Commissioners are to vote on the price of the contract and the purchase price, as well as the location. Those are the two things. And they did indeed do that. They made a motion on both of those. They did two separate motions, just like we did, and I highlighted the point that we're not buying two pieces of property. I think that was the most important thing, and you know, they wanted us to say that, too. I think it was important tonight that Ms. Rampy gave you guys an update because you can see where the money would be coming from to purchase that property. That is capital fees, and the Board of Commissioners also pointed out that that's tax revenue. So, those are county funding as well. So, I think that was really important that we did that. Both of those parcels, as you know, there's a 120-day due diligence period. We are under that 120 days on both of them. Mr. Marsh went with me today. We're on a Phase One on both of those, and I believe, if I remember correctly, May the 29th, it was the end of the month, was the date when they were actually going to start that work, so they're going to start drilling and doing the initial work there. I shared with them that the Board of Education had approved that, and we asked them for that support. Now, I want to kind of just go off-script a little bit and talk to you a little bit about the things that we had to look at, and we did a great job in the Building and Grounds talking about this today. So, Mr. Barksdale, if I leave anything out, or you feel like chiming in, please jump in here with me, or any members of the Building and Grounds that were there tonight, today. One of the things that I feel like we need to do is really let some things marinate a little bit. So, over the next month, I want you really to think about some things. One, that consolidation is key. Two, I want you to think about numbers. So, we have looked at Eastfield Global Magnet School, and we've looked at Marion Elementary School. If you combine those two schools with Head Start, you're looking at roughly 650 students. So, you're going to reduce your footprint in the fact that one of those, both of those schools would then be vacated. And I want to talk to the board a little bit about how this can be a bigger picture for the county. And it was also one of the things that I mentioned to the county tonight. Just remember that when we vacate a property, we offer it back to the county. Just remember that when we vacate a property, we off, we offer it back to the county. The county is interested in, in pursuing some grants to be able to build a new, a new D S S. There's some other things that they've looked at as well. So these, these buildings that we have could be of great value to the county. So I would say for us, we can combine those two schools. We can potentially vacate the building that you're in right now and relocate the central office to one of those buildings, be it Eastfield or Marion. You can also vacate the Summit Academy. Mr. Willard, I don't want to hurt your feelings, but y'all are outgrowing it. We know that. We knew that when we were going in as a temporary solution. But you could vacate that property as well. Mr. Carson, we saw him in here earlier tonight too. We could actually bring Mr. Barry Hill and our exceptional childrens under the same roof. And for the first time, have all of our central office employees under the same roof, be it at Marion Elementary or at Eastfield, whichever one that we made the decision to do. But I say that to say there's a lot of moving parts when it comes to this. And there's a lot of things for the board to, to, to consider. But the idea of vacating, moving into one school and giving up three properties is, is pretty smart. And I'll tell you that you're going to add money back into that capital, potentially, that would help offset the cost of the land. And I know when I mentioned that to the county commissioners tonight, their ears perked up because they are looking to be able to have some space to do some things. As you know, finding land in Marion is not easy right now. And the fact that we have two pieces secured is pretty incredible. And Mr. Abernathy, thank you and the Building and Grounds for helping us to secure that. But I say all that to say, the first step in this is deciding that, that we actually need to consolidate. And I will tell you, we've looked at a number of different things. I've looked and, and had numerous conversations with our executive staff about where we could consolidate, particularly in those places. We even considered talking about what would a K-8 school look like. And we have, we have made lots of, of, not decisions, but we've made, we put a lot of thought into, into what some of those might look like. But my recommendation to you tonight, after all those thoughts, and this again is not for a vote, but my recommendation for you, and we would vote on this next month, would be that we consolidate Marion Elementary and Eastfield Global Magnet School into one of those schools. We won't have a name for it. We, we, we do have a, we will have a site for it. That's the hope. We'll have a site. We'll be shovel-ready. We will have shown that we have two consolidated schools. And Mr. Subtles, we are going to have a lot of unanswered questions. I'm just telling you, there's more questions unanswered now because we start spinning the wheels. But I want to take you guys on a little bit of the timeline as well. And I want to talk to you about the importance. And I talked to the Building and Grounds Committee about this earlier. As we enter into that phase where you are shovel-ready and let's say we receive a grant, okay? When you receive a grant, if we, if we apply for the grant in December and we receive it in the spring, at that point, things get very critical to slow down and get right. And I say that to say this board earned the Old Fort School because another district lost their grant. And the time when they lose their grant is during that time. And it's often boards change, commission boards change, ideas change, community, community changes or it was an unpopular thing from the get-go. So I want to say before we ever go into this, that that year where we're doing some serious planning, you don't break ground until you have it right. Because the other piece that you'll need to do is back up. And you'll be doing change orders. You'll be doing things that cost taxpayers money. So my recommendation at that point was we hurry up and get it. But then you slow down and really, really get your ducks in a row. I say all that to say, it's one of those that I wish that this process was, you know, lickety-split and you could just jump right into it. But folks, just to be clear, four and a half years to five years, if we got the grant this year. You can add a year to that for every time you're delayed on getting the grant. So the, the piece that we feel like is going to be the most critical right now is not, you know, what schedule we're going to be on, what are we going to teach, you know, who's going to be the principal? We have five years to figure some of those things out. Who's going to be the mascot? What's the name of the school? What colors? What's their school colors going to be? When you start talking about those things, and that is community, everybody wants input, input and involvement, and we want them to have that. But for purposes of where we are right now, if we want a new school, we have to have one of these parcels locked up. We have to all be on the same page and communicating with our legislators. And here's the thing, I feel like the fact that we've got a win for the county helps. So when, when we can go to our legislators and say, not only are we advocating for a new school, but our county's been advocating for some, for some buildings, potentially could, could they get some money in this process to update one of, one of our facilities to be potentially a D S S building or something of, you know, another building that they would like to have? So to me, when you're going to your legislators with solutions and you're not asking for additional funds that aren't already on the table, that's a good thing. That's a good way to be going about it. So I feel confident that we've got good partnerships up the road on Main Street. And once we, now at this point, our next thing is really to talk about our partnerships on Jones Street. So making a trip to Raleigh, Mr. Marsh and I had that conversation earlier today. And really having some conversations with our legislators coming up and talking big picture. And I think they need to hear big picture. These are visions of what we've got with the county in our joint utilities and joint education meetings, having these conversations openly now. Because once you've, you've got the land contracts in place and you're not necessarily worried about someone upping the price on you, that's the reason you have to, you can just, we had to kind of back into these contracts. Now that we've got all this open, we can start to have some of those very critical conversations with our, with our legislators as well as our county commissioners. And I know I just went over a whole lot of stuff, but I want to back up and say, all I will be asking for next month is I'm going to be making a recommendation for you, for you to, to decide if we would combine Eastfield Global Magnet and Marion Elementary. And again, there are a lot of unanswered questions and we know that. But we, we have several years to answer some of those questions. And I'll certainly open it up, open the floor up for any questions that y'all may have tonight. Or Mr. Barksdale, I know Building and Grounds, we went over a whole lot of things today. So please feel free to, to chime in there.
I'd like to just say real quickly, the one thing that is so important right now, and I think Mr. Frank is the only one that's on this board when we started the process of building Old Fort School. And the board has to educate the community in the fact that these funds, and I'm so glad Ms. Rampy went over that, these funds cannot be diverted into salaries or anything of that nature. And that's what you're going to have as board members. People are going to be, well, why don't you just, instead of doing this, put the money towards the teachers? This money is designated for solely this project and, and you can't, you have to be able to talk to people about that because they're going to be asking those questions. And a lot of times, they get very frustrated when you tell them we can't use those funds. They don't understand it. So you have to educate the public on this. And I'd just like to thank Chuck Abernathy, Mr. Allison, Mr. Baker, Ms. Rampy, and Mr. Marsh. Did an excellent job. We had approximately two-hour meeting today, went over a ton of information. And I think you've got the right people in there right now that will carry us through this project. And I guess the timeline, we have to, time is money. September, if we, in any way possible, that's about, that would give you what, two months to prepare the grant? Is that enough time for you to prepare that grant? No? But that's what I'm saying. We're under a time crunch right now. So thank you a lot.
Yes, it's cer, it's certainly not an ideal time. And I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that because one of the other things that we need to do is we, we're going to need to put out an R F Q for our architect. And that's something Mr. Frank, you and I had a conversation about. I was able to contact John Henning. I do not have that ready for you tonight, but we plan on putting the R F Q out. And ideally, we'd like to be able to get that approved at our next board meeting. And what that'll do is allow for some site plans to be being developed. Because that is also part of, I mean, when you really start thinking about it, that's a lot. They don't have to be finalized, but we have to have the footprint of it anyway. And, and roughly where it would go on the land and position and, and, you know, getting some estimates on grading costs and different things like that. So we've got a lot of work to do between now and December to even, to even be close. And you know, we're going to be building this plane as we fly it a little bit, and I think that's the best way to say it. But I mean, I think that that's, you know, important to say, I still feel like we're going to be a really good candidate for this grant this year. And a lot of it's going to have to do with how well we can present it in, in Raleigh. And to be honest with you, who else might need it? Because there's a lot of counties out there who'll be advocating for it. But I will tell you, none of them are going to check all the boxes quite as good as we do. We check every single box in the rubric. So they're going to have a hard time saying no. And then when you add on the piece about the county and the possibility of doing something, it, it just adds on another layer and talks about how we are all in the same sandbox and willing to work together.
Okay, we have board reports. Mr. Subtles, I'm going to turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to pass down just a copy of this for each board member and one for the superintendent. The curriculum committee got together and discussed something that Ms. Baker, I'm going to give her all the credit on this. Ms. Hamby, if that's okay. Ms. Baker was able to acquire a funding for us. McDowell County Schools will be funded 67,000 by Borough's Welcome Fund for the '25, '26 school year for the following expense. Before I get started and explaining what it is that we're getting funded for, let me tell you a little bit about what we had. The curriculum committee got together and went through with Ms. Bell on some mathematical, a mathematical philosophy, which would help support Eureka, our math curriculum. It opened up several of our eyes. You know, we were all looking at how we were told to do it, told to do math problems back in the day. And we soon figured out there's five other ways that you could have done that. And I liked two of the other ones, which would have helped me out. So it was, it was eye-opening for us and to know that this is, the teaching's available for us and the funding was just unbelievable. So Ms. Baker, thank you for, for what you've done. But what it's going to allow us to do, it's going to allow coaching two times a month with Eastfield and Marion Elementary. So we're going to bring Marion Elementary and Eastfield Global Magnet School in. Eastfield Global Magnet will be certifying to be a model site for Western North Carolina and across the whole state of North Carolina for this philosophy. Marion Elementary will be deeply on board with that. Stipends for the teacher, for, for teachers for outstanding, excuse me, for outside the calendar year training will be available. Food expenses, meals, snacks provided during training days. Substitutes for teachers to work with Ms. Kim Bell. Peer observations or attended workshops, they will be available too. Glenwood Elementary School will be added as a tiered implementation site. The teachers at Glenwood Elementary will receive some professional development and, and visit Eastfield Global Magnet. Glenwood will also be given strategies and opportunities for learning, but there will not be a site coaching visits this year. Hopefully that's down the road. Substitutes for Glenwood Elementary will be covered by the funding that we have acquired. Ms. Elliott, Ms. Wilkerson, and Ms. Ray, principals have been updated and they are excited to get coaching support with strategies that will strengthen Eureka, which is our curriculum, math curriculum. Principal Wilkerson and Principal Elliott have given initial dates for training with Ms. Kim Bell, who is over the program, which is July through October 2025. And there's some key strategies that we'll go over, and you guys can see it there. But basically, what it's going to do, like I said, there's five ways to solve a math problem. So we are extremely excited. We don't need board approval or anything. We just wanted to be transparent and show you what we're doing for our kids, what Ms. Baker was able to do for us, Ms. Hamby, to support the teachers. And just, you know, let the teachers know this is not some of the past training that they've had to go through. So, so don't panic on us. I think they will enjoy this as much as we have, and I think the kids will greatly benefit from it. Oh, and Dr. Grit was there and he was faster than us on most of the math stuff, so.
Will that be reoccurring funding for that each year or do we?
Ms. Baker, can you help us? And again, I think maybe we already give her a round of applause for doing that.
Does anybody have anything else before, before I say anything?
I'd just like to echo what he said. It was a great presentation, Baker and, and Hamby and their group. And I just wish I had some more math problems to work through after we had, after we had that demonstration. Where, where was that when I needed it? It was a great presentation.
No, it was amazing. It was, it was fun. I think it'll make learning really fun.
I, I want to personally thank you, Mr. Subtles, for that presentation. It's, I'm excited about it. Ms. Baker, especially you and Ms. Hamby, congratulations. And I'm glad that we're all working together for the benefit of our students. And we can see the attributes that you add to the central office and we appreciate it. And Mr. Barksdale, do you have anything further for the Building and Grounds? Mr. Schuford, finance? Pretty well.
We can, if you got to, I'll be happy to. No, no, you can talk about it.
After a lot of discussion and hard work, we did, we're able to get the support from our county commission and to assist us with the, the fund issue that we had with this year's budget. And glad to report that, that we are going to be able to, to move forward with the budget as it was presented to us last, at last meeting, which we tabled.
Well, I, I think we're, yeah, when we get to the, the actual percentage, I think that they are going to try to have that to us by the 30th, the end of the month. But I will tell you that they're doing everything they can. And it's been reiterated to us on several occasions that they're doing everything they can to be able to reach that potential budget that we requested. They understand where we were. You know, initially, we had requested the 3% and they understood where we were. When we lost the low-welt funding that we took the, the cut, they knew where we were and they're, they're working with us to try to help meet in the middle. So again, I was able to, tonight, give the commissioners some incredible, you know, just give them some great congratulations and, and offer to support us. And really just to thank them for the work that they're doing behind the scenes to, to try to find a way to make our make-ins meet, not only for us, but, but for them as well. So we're, we're not quite to that point where they, they've said, here's exactly what you're getting. But they are working towards that goal and we've had positive, positive.
Well, thank you, thank you very much, Dr. Grit, for that clarification. And I apologize for any misrepresentation there, but we'll, hopefully we'll be able to discuss that further, maybe the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Excellent report as well. Money's always important. Ms. Helm's policy, and I know you've got a lot coming up on that. Yeah, but you've got coming up a lot. Do you have an idea when you might be meeting or when? Well, thank you so much. And I know Ms. Helm will handle that very professionally. Mr. Schuford, Head Start, that's always a good thing.
Well, we had a, had a good conversation at the last meeting, talking about the, the audit that we had just gone through for our Head Start group. And saying Dr. Delaney and our staff's. And saying Dr. Delaney and our staff's praises. But actually, they were able to receive the actual report since that time, which it usually takes a few months to make that happen. And it was an exemplary report. They, it's, a lot of, a lot of things they were applauding. I'm, I'm at a lack of the words for the top ten there that they mentioned. But anyway, the auditor made the comment, it was the best audit that they had been present at this year. And our hats off to our great folks at Head Start.
Yeah, and thanks for the board for doing their homework. Okay, the next item under Board Reports is NJ ROTC from Mr. Baker and Mr. McGinnis. And I want to say this, I appreciate you guys going over there and staying in close contact because I'm going to tell you, those two fellows over there now, they mean business. They, they want a top-notch program, and I know they're proud that you guys are there with and supporting them. And I'll turn it over to you guys.
Okay, so we do try to meet with them as frequently as possible. We wish we could get over there more often, but the ROTC unit now, they are just like leading the charge. That's, that's the best way I know to say it. He was talking earlier, First Sergeant Miley, about being a distinguished unit. And that is a huge deal in the ROTC world in general. We're talking about a unit that I believe, if my numbers might be a little off, but I think it's something like out of four thousand different units across the United States, and they're like top-tier. And that is just unheard of because there's so many different criteria they have to meet, and they've got to have all their ducks in a row, and these guys do it. And I've been impressed with both those gentlemen, talking to them. They care about the kids, they're, they have thinkers, they're developing leaders. And it's not just, it's a military theme, but it's not just military. I mean, these are going to go on, some of them are going to be educators, some of them are going to be community leaders, some of them are going to be in industry. But they're learning the core disciplines that this, for some of them, this is the best example of civics and community that they're going to have. Especially in the kind of climate we have today, but they're just an outstanding unit. And they've got a bunch of things coming up. But my understanding is, in the fifty-one-year history that we've had, I believe the program coming to be in in seventy-two, something like that, seventy-four, this is the forty-second time that they've had a distinguished unit. They recently had their blue and gold banquet. And after that, they have a NJ ROTC picnic that's cartons in the house. And they had actually prepared to host about a hundred people, including cadets. And they have a contingency plan in place which they had to put to good use because they wound up having the largest attendance in their history. It was something like two hundred almost actually attended. So it's going over very well, and they're building a strong community. That's what contributes to their success. They don't sit there and chest-thump and say, hey, look at us. They'll come up and say, hey, how can we help? And they have influence over so many different programs, and we're hearing from different teachers. They love having these kids in class because of the discipline and because of their willingness to contribute to these things. Just to give you an example, some of the stuff they've got up. In April, they started a fundraiser online and raised over twelve thousand dollars. That's going to go toward the Leadership Camp coming up in July, which is like a week-long event where they just do all kinds of stuff. I mean, you wouldn't believe, they do rappelling, they do archery, they do all kinds of different stuff. Physical fitness in the morning, just real character-building stuff that is actually going to have, yeah, a direct relation or correlation to real life. And they're learning it now, they're picking it up. They've got, I think they've got thirty-nine cadets right now already signed up for the Leadership Course, and that number's probably still growing. And they're inviting schools that have actually shut down, they're going to be coming in to do our program from all over everywhere. Four cadets are going to a Leadership Academy in Gainesville, Georgia, and that is really intense stuff. I remember when we done Leader Lab back in the day, when you did that, that was like almost, it's cream of the crop kind of training you get. It's a, it's a really good experience for these guys to go through, guys and gals. Cell Academy coming up, we got a billet for that. Patriots Point in Yorktown, they actually get to go down and spend a couple nights on a living piece of history, an aircraft carrier that actually was in World War II. One thing that I have noted, and I would like to mention, the civilian marksmanship program. It's an amazing program that people with certain credentials, you can actually join up. They actually, the program part of it, they actually sell like actual grand rifles that was used in World War II. They're refurbished, and they actually sell the original issues. You can actually bid on them by them. But the program itself is to foster the same kind of core discipline and leadership. It's also like marksmanship for civilians. The cadets are going to be able to go, we'll, we'll, might bring that up a little bit later. I've got some points on that, but they've got the opportunity to do that. And we might talk about that a little bit more at a later meeting. But all in all, they're just, they're doing everything and anything. They keep their calendar full, never a dull moment. So any time of the year, they're active in something. So I'd just like to see us support them every way we can, and I know they appreciate the board for everything that we've done with them so far, so.
Ms. Baker, anything you want to add, sort of, who's covered it? I, I want to say this real quickly. My son was in ROTC, and I worked with him quite extensively. But I've not seen the spark in ROTC like I have in the last year. And I am, I am pleasantly astounded by these two guys that are in and what they're doing. And I appreciate you guys doing what you do. And I know if they need a cook, Mr. Baker will take care of them.
Oh, yeah.
And Mr. Frank?
They, they are really reaching out to underprivileged kids also, you know, that don't have a real home life, and they're getting discipline and training, and that's really helping them. They're going back to their parents, you know, and the, the parents are getting trained somewhat, you know, and helped through these cadets. They're, they're doing a great job.
Okay, does anybody have anything further for the good of the board? All right. Okay, item number thirteen on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. However, I want to bring to your attention that any item may be pulled from the consent agenda with the majority voted the board and discussed and voted on as a separate item. And if no one has anything they want to bring up or bring out of the consent agenda, I will entertain the, the motion to approve the consent agenda as it's presented. Motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McGinnis and a second by Mr. Allison, is that correct? Okay, is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, with no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous vote. And at this time, item number fourteen on the agenda is a request to go into closed session.
Mr. Frank, before you do that, if I, if I could do something publicly, because I think it, it, he deserves it. Mr. Marsh, he kind of alluded to this man, but let me tell you something about how special this man is. I was approached in the community about holding a college softball tournament that was previously held at NC State, Duke University, and for the last seven years at Lewisburg College. And I was asked if we would consider doing it at Big League Camp. And so we did, we agreed to it, and I was in panic mode about trying to get things ready. And I completely forgot about the whole IT, live streaming. And so I made a phone call to our IT department, which was tied up, and I said, I am in big trouble now. And I called the only other IT guy that I knew right offhand, or had his number. And Mr. Garrett Berryhill came over on his own time, and he absolutely made the tournament a tournament. We had over five thousand viewers on our Facebook page that we were able to do that from three different camera angles. He actually did too good of a job because the camera picked up me eating a hot dog in the press box, and somebody made a comment, is somebody eating in there? So he did too good of a job. But we were also awarded a five-year contract because of how good the tournament went over. And we're hoping to bring in CTE and Ms. Finley. I would love to have the kids be commentators on there and do live, close-up. We may have the next Harry Carey, and we just don't know it right now. So it, I think it would be great, but Mr. Berryhill, we could not have pulled this off in this community without you, and we, we really appreciate you doing it on your own time, too. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Suddles, also, you had mentioned about Mr. Williams. Would you like to say something on his?
Sure, I can do that. Mr. Frank Williams, I think a lot of you knew that, passed away. He was a Marion Police Officer, super big in our ROTC. I know in the nineteen nineties, we had the biggest class, that was your class, probably, I'm guessing, the biggest ROTC class, McDowell history, with the different cadets that joined in. And Mr. Williams was up there all the time promoting it and promoting it and promoting it. And he passed away. We lost a really good man, a good friend, and a, a great guy in the community. So I appreciate you letting us honor him here, here tonight.
I, I'd like to say this on behalf of Mr. Williams. I worked with him many years. He worked for the Sheriff's Department, McDowell Tech. He was a magistrate. And I want to say that he was also a disabled veteran who paid the sacrifice for his service in Vietnam. So that's quite an honor for Mr. Williams, and I thank you for bringing that up. Okay, as I said, we're going to go into closed session, and I'll entertain a motion. But first, I'll tell you why we're going into closed session. Under subsection A1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential student information pursuant to twenty USC twelve thirty-two G FERPA and GS one fifteen C four oh two E includes student discipline and student transfers releases. Under subsection A1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential personal information pursuant to GS one fifteen C three nineteen dash three twenty-one, includes employee matters. And under subsection A5, to discuss the terms of contract for employment, includes discussing contract terms for new employees. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Suddles to go into closed session, and we have a second by Mrs. Hales. Is there any further discussion? Okay, with no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous at, looks like six minutes to eight.